Go ahead and call our work session to order on April 4th, 4:00 PM. If we would, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Let's have a moment of silence, please. Okay, we'll start off with the ARPA fund consideration, County Manager.
Chairman, members of the Board, we talked about some considerations for use of ARPA funds for several months now. We have already allocated some funding for some materials and supplies as needed. Today, I would like to take the opportunity to talk about some additional requests that coincide with the remaining first round funds. I will emphasize that. These are remaining first round funds and you should see another round of funding in the upcoming fiscal year as well. So, as we talk about these opportunities, please keep in mind that an additional round will be coming. The purpose today is to talk about specifically some of the requests that have surfaced during the budgeting process. And what we are looking at today, and April Halm will soon be talking about these opportunities, but we are looking at ways that we can use some of this ARPA funding to assist in some of the requests that will, in essence, lower our requested budget for the upcoming year. So, having that in mind, I guess I would ask April if she would start going over some of the information that I believe she's handed out at this point.
Everyone should have a packet of information. The back pages were actually emailed to you at the end of last week. The front page is my summary, and that is things that have been submitted during the budget process that could possibly fall under the ARPA funding at the Board's approval. DSS, in their budget, they requested three laptops, two servers, ten computer monitors, six PCs, and one new vehicle in the current year budget. Nine iPads and two Wi-Fi hotspot boxes to go with those iPad devices, and those are for social workers. And they add their information, submit information, do some documentation on their visits. Their original request that came to the Board several months ago, Lisa had requested actually several vehicles with the ARPA funding. We have not funded any of those vehicles, or servers, or computers, or anything social services had asked for. I had a conversation with Lisa on Friday. She does have an immediate need for two two-wheel-drive vehicles and one four-wheel-drive vehicle. Now, in the original ARPA funding, Lisa did request six vehicles. They have actually borrowed the old administrative Malibu that we had here in the county because they have a vehicle down right now. And I believe they have borrowed another vehicle of some sort because just don't have the availability and the vehicles are wearing out. They have a lot of miles. Another thing I want to add about the DSS request, anything that's approved with DSS, approved by this Board that's going to be budgeted, has the potential to be reimbursed up to about 55 or 60%. That first line, the $65,520, most of that has already been approved. The vehicle, the vehicle is actually the $22,000, and that's one of the two. It's the one vehicle she has requested in this budget, but it's the two-wheel-drive vehicle at $20,000 off the state contract. That is the only thing that hasn't been approved by the state for reimbursement that you see in front of you. An ambulance for EMS. We actually had a budget request last year for the ambulance for EMS. And at that point last year, I believe the amount being requested was about $168,000. That price has gone up for a new ambulance. It's now $221,500 for a new ambulance. Law enforcement, they have requested five outfitted Dodge Durangos in the budget. The same situation as DSS, a lot of mileage. The ARPA funding has purchased one Dodge Durango, and we've outfitted another vehicle out of that funding already. Cost of those five outfitted Dodge Durangos are $220,000, and that's requesting the budget from law. The jail and security. Jail upgrades and security, surveillance, camera systems for law enforcement, the jail, and possibly expansion of courthouse. They have an outdated locking system. They have outdated cameras. Things upgraded do qualify under the ARPA funding. Dispatch. We know that we have some grant funding coming for dispatch. We know we are paid, officially paid. You know, we have some of the renovations that are going to be paid for, but there's a possibility that we're going to go over that funding. So, we've put an extra $50,000 in there to finish that out because we don't know what construction costs are going to do. We, there's always things that come up with construction. So, there's a $50,000 agency we've put in there. Generator costs for the administrative building, which is the building we're in right now. Part of that, $100,000 of that generator is going to be paid for by the SCIF funding. That's one thing that this Board decided to put $100,000 toward that backup generator for this building since dispatch is going to be located here. The cost of that, we actually heard during a budget meeting last week, the cost of that's probably going to be a lot more than was anticipated. So, we've put $50,000 additional in for that. All that does qualify under the ARPA funding. The total cost for all requested in the budget, and this does include the two vehicles that I added from the original request from DSS, $726,620. Thirty thousand of that we know is going to come back to us already through DSS. If the vehicles are approved by the Board, it's a possibility that the county will get back that reimbursement. Your total current needs that we have submitted in the budget, $696,620. And we do have, from the first allocation, we have $712,761.92 remaining to allocate.
Open the floor for discussion. John?
The question that I have on the DSS reimbursement, if we get the 30-plus, will that reimbursement go into general funds, or will you look at it as a reimbursement of ARPA funds?
With the new final rule, that money can't... ...continue the discussion because we're... ...about entered a land. It's actually being ARPA funded.
That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair.
The ambulance for EMS, that is a significant increase checked with EEV. I believe the quote did come... Is there... There's odd just...
What else?
Reimbursement was a question, but it...
The only, you know, looking at the funds, is looking at getting five of these Dodge Durangos all at one time. I mean, that's a... ...just a big chunk at one time. I'm not... You know, four would make a difference. You know, I know we're going to have some other expenses coming up, but that's the only thing that I question is just five of them at one time. That's the biggest chunk of money in this part of it. Other than that, I'm glad that we have this money to, you know, be able to help out these agencies.
Question two on the jail upgrades, $65,000. Is that going to further us along to house federal prisons, more prisons, or is this just maintenance on the portion being used?
The way that I understand it is first and foremost, the equipment at the jail is bad. Several references have been made, and I think examples pulled that some I've seen of the camera systems that they have versus some of the camera systems that other agencies have. I don't know that that helps out from the inmate standpoint, from the federal as far as holding those individuals. I know that that is a huge improvement in overall safety for the whole facility. Locking mechanisms, I've heard about that since I came. And understanding that way back when, the county bought an antiquated system at that point, but these are all items that will greatly improve and enhance the Sheriff's Department and the jail facility.
Go back to the ambulance for the EMS. I'm looking at, you know, when they came to the Budget Committee, how much had that ambulance increased from the last one that they priced to this one? It was, was it 35,000 or 45,000?
It's more than that range.
I mean, if we keep waiting, you know, in six months, I don't know how much that ambulance will go up or what the lead time to get that ambulance is. Unless a year ago, we'd have saved 45,000, but we didn't have that luxury that we have right now. With the cost of everything just skyrocketing right now, now's the time to spend some of this.
I think the timing's right to catch up on some stuff we really need to catch up on. John?
The only thing I noticed in the right The only thing I noticed in the right up here, the description for the jail, it didn't say anything about the locking system in the jail. We, we replaced all those on the mail side five years ago with brand-new. So the antiquated system went out five years ago and I don't, I don't see anything in here about the locking system. Do you need a motion, county manager, chair?
At some point, yes. What, what today's purpose was is multi. First, it is to have an understanding from the board's perspective on how we can proceed in the budget request. You know, if, if the consensus of the board is to authorize these funds for these uses, then as a budget process, we can take that step to implement that and present it accordingly. Now, I believe, I remember that you can't have a motion within a work session or that was the general discussion. So forthcoming, I think that is important. And if we can just get the idea today, maybe we can implement it at the day meeting later this month.
Look for a consensus from the board today to see whether they favor this or not favor it or...
I mean, I am in favor, Mr. Chair.
I'm with me.
I would add that, you know, right now, things are about, as you see with the ambulance, things are expensive, but who knows what the future's going to hold and, and we have this, this pool of money. We won't have, and I mean, we need to utilize it for things. And I, I know Commissioner Bobby mentioned the, the five vehicles at the sheriff's office, but if you don't do them now, I mean, you're going to be faced with, how do you do them later? And they just wear, I mean, they, they, every day, they're just adding miles to it. But one other question I've got is, in the jail upgrades, there's a mention of possible expansion to courthouse. What is that referring to? Does anyone?
It's security. It's security.
Okay.
Just, I pulled the wording that law enforcement had in the budget. It's all security cameras and surveillance for the courthouse.
Just as everyone knows, as we talked about, th- these are, these are estimated numbers. So the remaining difference in the current available funds, I'd like to hold that because these, these numbers could change. You know, these numbers are already weeks old. Who knows what they'll be in weeks to come? So, and while we're doing that, I think if we could, we let April continue with the next pages because these are, these are important as well.
With the final rule that went into effect Friday, the final, final rule, yeah, it is the final one. It's 473 pages long, so it's final. There is an option for governments, local governments or municipalities that received under $10 million of their allocation to do what's called a standard allowance for revenue loss. Now, what this does, US Treasury came up with their own calculation and their own formula. And they said, okay, if, here, here's what we estimate that a small municipality or a small county lost in revenues during the pandemic. Here's where we're going to start, and it was 10 million. Well, we're below that 10 million significantly. If the board decides we, that we would like to take that option with this pool of money that standard, US Treasury opens that money up to all types of government services. I hope you had a chance to kind of read what I gave you. This came from the School of Government. It was a couple of different emails that I've received and I went through and just kind of highlighted the highlights for you so you could see what this election would do with this money for our local government here in Allegheny County.
I think for the, if I may, for the general public, this is one of the final finals documents from the government, but basically we just got this, or I just got it Friday, that it's one of the finals, but it's been a final several times. And that's one reason we haven't spent that money because we were trying to wait till the federal government made up their mind to get us to this second or third or fourth final, whatever you want to call it. Because if we had to spend it and spend it wrong, we'd have to pay it back.
That is correct. We were working under the interim rule. There, there's actually been three interim rules, I believe. One was in May of last year. Uh, and then there was another one in... Final rule came out toward the end of January, I believe is when it was, and it was Friday. But this is one of the significant changes in this final rule. We realized that the smaller governments, the smaller municipalities had more needs than they thought. If you go back, when they talked about premium pay for employees and stuff, we used to have to define everybody as essential. That's no longer there. Local government is essential and they realized that. So it's, all those categories expanded and expanded very favorably for the small.
The floor for questions, anybody?
You need a motion to accept the standard or do we need to take this in regular session?
What, what I would recommend is, again, if everyone is in favor of taking the standard allowance, is to amend your agenda because it is not on your agenda. Amend your agenda to include that and then the proper motion for that. In relation to that, there is a policy on your agenda that was done before the final four-times version that you now have this, this allowance in. So in the same amending of the agenda, I would also ask that you omit that portion of the agenda so that we can reconfigure that to match with the standard allowance version that you will be considering.
Still a consensus to see if everybody's in agreement. Good feelings.
I am in agreement, Mr. Chair.
Good to go. We'll amend the agenda to accommodate that.
Can I answer any more?
Questions for... Thank you.
As happy, thank you. Conclude. Next, on the work session, the use of occupancy tax. Commissioner John Irwin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have passed out and I have spoken quite a bit about the occupancy tax, that bill that was passed in 2011. Now, with the legislation that was passed, it was very specific. It gave us definitions of net proceeds, what it meant to promote travel and tourism and things of this nature. One of the things that it did do, it said that if the Board of Commissioners established a tourist development authority, then the authority shall report quarterly and close of the fiscal year to the Allegheny County Board of Commissioners. Now, by that, I assume, and I haven't been told otherwise, that the TDA is a subcommittee of the county commissioners, which brings up a number of things that we have to do. We are basically providing oversight of the TDA. Drew called the School of Government and asked, can we ask them to do a bylaws? Because the bylaws have never been approved and have been submitted to this committee. The School of Government, please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but they came back and said we'd never heard of that requirement. With this session law and the definitions and the appointment authority and things of this nature, it rather restricts how we treat the board. However, the bottom line is that they work for us. We established them, they report to us. So in that regard, especially since the recent events, I think it would behoove us to either require bylaws that we approve or come up with a policy and a procedure on how the TDA tax funds are going to be spent. What has happened now is we have a conflict. Now, in the past, it wasn't a conflict because we were going to have Music on Main on Friday night and everybody got along. Without consultation with the Jubilee, it's suddenly come up that we are going to move Music on Main to a Saturday night, close the street that is the portion that the, the people that come to the Jubilee have been used, have been using. Now, I also point out to the county commissioners, particularly the board members that are on the budget committee, whenever the Arts Council submitted their request for 9,000, I believe it was $9,000 from the county, they included the suspected grants or the anticipated grants from the state of North Carolina. Oddly enough, it was missing the $20,000 that they were going to request for a grant from the TDA. I gave you information at the last commissioners' meeting with copies of where the grants came in, the requests came in, where the owner of one of the venues sits on the Arts Council. Conflict of interest, but that's for their concern. My concern is that we make sure that if we, the TDA funds that they receive from the occupancy tax, it's not coming out of general funds, be utilized in a way that it is not in direct competition with our for-profit venues here in Allegheny County. And I'm going to point out one specific, Allegheny Jubilee. Allegheny Jubilee, Travel Magazine. If you've flown, you found Travel Magazine. It's in the front seat. Allegheny Jubilee, North Main Street, Sparta, North Carolina. At the Sparta Theater, we get a warm welcome from Agnes and Ernest Joins, who sell us tickets and introduce us to a few of the regulars. This, they are the only ones that were mentioned in Travel Magazine and it, the article was about great road trips with bluegrass magazine, uh, bluegrass music. Agnes was kind enough to give me their visitor register. We are looking for people to come into Sparta and visit our locale. Surf City, North Carolina. Boston, Mass. Washington, DC. McLeansville, North Carolina. Charlottesville, Virginia. Flipping on over, Chico, California. Belgium. Brussels. Mount Airy. Wax Hall, North Carolina. The countries, and Agnes was kind enough to give this to me. England. Australia. Africa. I went with my lovely bride there Saturday night. There were very few native Alleghenyans there. Majority were from out of town. And they were from nine to 97. Luther Marlowe, 97 years old, was cutting a rug with every young lady that he could get close to. It was good music. I like it. This is our heritage. Now, what I'm proposing is that we establish some policies and procedures or some guidelines to the TDA, since basically we're supervising them, that would prevent this, using tax money to support competition for venues that are already here. Well, I feel that we could either do it by saying, I put it in your bylaws and pass them, or we could do some policy and procedures that, that give them some guidance in this. Because right now, they really have no guidance to fall back on. Now, one of the things that I wanted to note is with this statute that was established in 2011, it does not mention 501(c)(3). If you're bringing in tourists, you're eligible. But oddly enough, whenever I speak with Jack Joins and Agnes Joins, who, whether her husband started it, no one has advised them that they have access to TDA money. This is a breakdown. You would think that our Chamber of Commerce would be out there supporting established businesses, but no one has advised them that they, that this was available. Additionally, before we had the final rule on the ARPA money, they could have shown the losses that they incurred. Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, you've come out of pocket to keep those doors open during the COVID emergency. You would think that a Chamber of Commerce would come around and tell you what was available so that you could make application so that you could keep the doors open. So I think it would be appropriate for us to consider establishing either policies and procedures or requiring them to write it in bylaws or some other administrative procedure, some guidelines so that we can prevent this and give an, just give guidance to them. Because right now, to me, it's woefully inadequate. That's, uh, that is the reason why I'd like to place it on the work session, Mr. Chairman, and I would appreciate the feelings of the members of the commissioners.
Open the floor for discussion. Okay.
I am, I just wonder if anyone has spoken to the Arts Council yet, the Arts Council spoken to anyone else? And just try to talk this out like friends and neighbors instead of getting the government involved. Um, I mean, I think that Music on Main has been happening on Friday nights. It's been very successful on Friday nights. I don't see the need to change it. So I think that if the two entities got together and, and worked this out, it could be worked That's what I would like to see happen instead of having to get all kinds of oversights and government getting their fingers in all the pies. That would be, that would be my, my hope from all this.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it would be hearsay for me to say that I have spoken with Jack and Agnes and they have told me that no one to date has spoken to them concerning this. And I would ask, since we can get it from the source, am I correct or am I?
You're correct. It hadn't been approached. We were in favor, I was in favor. So I had another... I like to continue our 39. It's our biggest... Last year. Next year. Bangin'. You... Sir, pardon me.
Well, I'm sorry, just to correct you, no one appeared towards this body. It was the Town Council that they appeared, and they alluded that they had spoken with you. Now, I've been told by multiple people that the individual that was making the presentation stated that she had talked or they had talked to you. There was a member of the Town Council that said that he was on a committee that had spoken with you and had good working relationships with you, but you, you told me that no one has spoken to you about that.
They haven't. A couple of them.
You're correct.
Apologize for interrupting you, Commissioner Lufman.
That's okay. I just, you know, you all have been doing this a whole lot longer than Music on Main has been going on. And, I mean, I don't know about the other commissioners, but I hear constant talk about, "There's nothing to do in Allegheny," all the time. Well, that gives something to do on Friday night as Music on Main and let you all do your Jubilee on Saturday night. And it, you know, it brings more people into town. They might stay in a hotel and eat at the restaurants to come to your place on Saturday night. So to me, that just makes good sense.
We do have a lot of projects coming.
Questions?
I was more of a comment than a question, but I know that, Jack, and, you know, the Jubilee's been around for 20-plus years or 30-plus years. And I think that, I'm not real excited about taxpayers' money going up against an established business, but this board does not select who that money goes to. That's the TDA board. And I'm just, I've been looking through some of the ones that they've financed, and you look at Saturday in the Park, $6,000. Music on Main, $6,000. Backwood Music Festival, $3,000. Beat Goes On, $5,000. $20,000, you know, is spent to bring musicians, artists in or whatever. These businesses profit from those people coming in, whether it be through food, liquor, spending the night, or whatever. Eventually, to me, these businesses that profit need to be putting money back in to getting these programs to come here. But that's a decision that TDA, their board makes. They don't make that decision. We, I think, once or twice a year get a list of what they've done, and whether we, all of us agree, or part of us agree, or disagree on what they've done, that's, their board has made that decision. Whether I think it's right or wrong, they've made that, just like this board. We make decisions, half the people think they're wrong, the other half think they're right. So, you know, we're someplace in the middle. But I think, I think consideration on private businesses should be turned towards the TDA also, you know, and I'm glad to hear, you know, what, what everybody has to say, but, you know, you've got, I don't even remember how many board members make that decision for TDA, five or six or around five. So, you know, that's, that's one place to start also. That's all I've got.
Mark?
That's, I mean, that's kind of my thoughts. The TDA is its own board. I'm not sure what control we would have over that, but as one individual commissioner, I would certainly entertain, you know, the conversation and exploring that, but, you know, if we're going to control them, we might as well run it ourself. And I don't think that we, I think it's, there's probably some statute and regulations and things of how it's got to be set up, and, and so, I mean, I'm sure there's some rules we'd have to look at to see what's, what we could do to try to, you know, but we could certainly sit down with them, I think, and have a conversation and try to help, help them kind of understand what we're hearing, and, and kind of like Commissioner Lufman said, maybe we could, you know, kind of work through and make sure everybody understands where everybody's coming from and try to make it work best for everybody.
Echo, same thing. I hate to see tax dollars get involved with private. I really do. And y'all have done a great job, been out there a long time.
Chair, if I may, could I ask for a consensus, since we have the quarterly report from the TDA tonight? Could I get a consensus of the commissioners that we need to convey to the TDA, that they should take consideration before awarding money? Do we want to do a policy and procedure? We have formed them. We can dictate how they're going to operate, not tell them how to operate, but we can give them guidelines. We have a member of the TDA present right now.
The state general statute dictates how they, what percentage of their monies are being spent.
Statute also says, and I have an agreement with the school of government, that Steve Mason does not qualify to be the chair, and these commissioners sitting in front of these people ignore that. So you can look at the, you can look at the statute, if it is not going to be enforced, it doesn't make any difference. But if we give them guidelines that they need to take into consideration, or whenever Steve Mason comes in front of us tonight, we can let him know that we have heard and taken into consideration the Jubilee and Pizzeria, because this affects a Pizzeria also, and we highly encourage them to take that into consideration before they earmark funds. I would be satisfied with that, but we need to let it know what the, we as commissioners, where we stand on this, or they're going to continue doing what they want to do. Now, remember, in the last, past years, they've given money to them, only it was channeled through the Chamber of Commerce.
It's a consensus, the board, you want to do that, what you're thinking? We'll open the floor.
I think that it's a great thing. You know, be fair to all citizens and.
Would accept that, Mr. Chair.
TDA was set up by state law, the way I understand it, and it's governed by certain rules and regulations. If they're not following those rules and regulations, you know, then something ought to happen. But I think our General Counsel and the School of Government have been back and forth on this, and so far, School of Government and General Counsel, our General Counsel has said everything's been within the scope of the statute. Now, I don't know what we can change legally and what we can't change legally. I'm not a lawyer. That's, that's why we pay Heather to figure those things out. But I think every, every document that comes through here, like in a contract, is sort of a living document. It can be fine-tuned sometimes if it needs to be, so, you know, possibly this is a time to look at something, see if everything is, is being done as fairly as possible. I just, I just go back to the thing, I just, I just hate to go against a private business and having the government fund. Government's got deep pockets, private businesses don't. And that makes it hard when you're, sort of like a basketball game, you're playing the other team, then you're playing the officials on top of that. So it just needs to be a fair playing field for everybody.
And I think that when it's conveyed to Mr. Mason that way, then I think that we might, that might foster a, some cooperation instead of, we don't need to attack. We need to just share with him that, you know, we've had some concerns brought forward to us, and we would like to see these two groups talk together and work this out as neighbors.
I believe that would be a good first step, Mr. Chair.
I would like to comment on whether or not the current board members of the TDA, because we did have, I think, legal look into that, we had some back and forth, some questions on it, and basically, it's, the final say comes from this board, and, you There are some of the positions that are, that are clear, but there's an area of it that, that's, that's not as clear as some think it is. And so, I mean, you know, that's the position of this board, that the current board, as it sits, is okay with the majority of this board. And so, until that changes, you know, I would, I certainly am not comfortable saying that there are board members sitting on the TDA that are not, that do not meet the state statute.
Mr. Chair, Chairman Evans is correct. I contacted the Treasury Department, and their comment was, TDAs are run by the county commissioners. I brought it up. I was supported by the School of Government, and basically, the present composition of the TA board, he does not qualify, but it was the decision of the county commissioners that he remained. That is in your purview. It was four to one, and I will accept that. But, and I will, I will accept that as a first measure, that we speak with Mr. Mason tonight, whenever he presents the quarterly report, and let him know that I believe it's consensus that he, they should take into consideration competition with private, with private enterprises, and see where it goes from there. And, Mr. Chair, I would request a five-minute break so that I can return the materials to Ms. Joins, and I would like to thank those members from the Jubilee that are concerned for attending today.
We're going to talk to Mr. Mason. Let's get it right here. Mr. Mason, now, Michelle, you want to address that?
I'll be glad to.
Whoever so.
It's okay with the rest of the board.
I have no, I have no problems with it, and I can assure you, if I can jump in and give my two cents, I'm not hesitant.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Ready? Take a five-minute recess. We'll head and call our meeting back to order, and next up is Ms. Jennifer Green, Appalachian Health. Mark Evans.
Yeah, I just would welcome Jennifer. Thank you for coming. I have been, my, my day job is kind of involves getting some health septic and, and well permits, and so I've had some personal experience, but also, we as a board have, have heard a lot of feedback from the community, and it's been challenging, and we know the demand is high, and it's, it's at an all-time high, and then, of course, we've been in a challenging, somewhat work environment. And so I just kind of reached out to Jennifer last week to engage, to kind of have a conversation. I mean, it's our responsibility to provide these services. I mean, it's our responsibility to provide these services from someone, for our citizens here in the county. And, of course, we have a district that works and covers the three counties, and so we're kind of all in, sailing in the same ship. I know you've created, I think, a couple of positions during this time, filled them both, and then one since has been vacated. And I think there's some regulatory challenges that you face when you hire positions and what they have to go through. And then, we were talking a little bit about that, and maybe some possibility of kind of bringing in some techs to maybe help lighten the load from the positions. So, I just, you know, as being partners, I'd kind of like to, I thought it'd be good for us to hear, as a board, to kind of hear what your challenges and needs are. Maybe we can lobby our folks in Raleigh in some way to help. Maybe it's monetary help. You know, funds are challenging, but the need is very high, and I think we need to be willing to at least listen and try to engage and be a partner in any way that we can to try to help each other. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Well, I really appreciate you reaching out and the opportunity to come and talk some more. Andy, could you give them a copy of this? And I think I have enough for everybody. This, that Andy's sharing with you is sort of a summary of our permitting over the last two years. And I want to just say, we did our best to try to look in the crystal ball and figure out how many staff we might need. And in 2020, you all probably recall that the Board of Health decided to increase our fees. It was the first increase we had made in water protection fees in seven years. Part of the reason for that is because we wanted to hire additional staff, and we knew that we don't get any dollars from the state for water protection work. So, septic and well permits have to be funded with a combination of fees that we collect and local dollars that we put into the program. Sorry, I'm going to keep you busy for a minute, if you don't mind. This is a copy that Andy's going to pass out. This is the general statute that outlines who can be an environmental health specialist in North Carolina. This is set by the North Carolina Registered Environmental Health Board. So, there's a board that governs basically the approval when we want to hire new people. In general, you have to have a four-year college degree, and you have to have 30 hours of science. So, pretty much, we're looking at majors, you know, people who have majored in a science field to recruit. What we have to do when we hire someone, and we just did this recently, we have to submit their transcript to the Registered Environmental Health Board, and they have to look at their transcript and say, yes, we think this person would qualify. Once that happens, then they have to be hired. And then, there's a process where they have to go through central intern training in Raleigh. That training has been previously only offered three times a year. I think because a lot of counties are in the same boat, the state has added a fourth training, so it's offered four times a year. That has to happen, and Andy can correct me, but that has to happen first. So, we have to find the candidate that has the educational background. They have to be approved by the REHS Board to be an intern. That's what we call them. They have to be employed by a local health department. Then, they have to apply to this training, which is offered four times a year. So, if you hire someone off-cycle, you've got a little bit longer of a wait. Once they go through this training, then they have to prove themselves through a written examination, and they also have to be evaluated by a regional specialist to prove that they can actually do the work. So, they have to do a certain number of lots. I think it's 20 lots they have to do, and you can correct me. But they have to do a lot of things to prove their competency. This is important because we don't want people who don't know what they're doing, right? If you permit something and it's not a good permit, the homeowner is going to be the one to suffer. So, there's a reason why we have permits, and, you know, this is National Public Health Week, in case you all didn't know that. So, that, you know, I think it's important that we do this. I will also say that we have a lot of concern about the delays. It's taking entirely too long for people to get a perk test, and we know that that has real implications. We want our community to grow and thrive, and one of the challenges we have is trying to, you know, really address workforce shortage, both through recruitment challenges, but also, we've got to retain people. And historically, you know, Andy can correct me because he's worked at the Health Department a little bit longer than I have, but we haven't funded positions in the downturn. So, we get real excited about the fact that we've got a wait permitting delay. And like I said, the way we fund those is through a combination of fees and local dollars. Well, when the economy turns, or there isn't as much development that's happened, that drops the revenue that you get for fees, which has to increase the revenue you get from local dollars. And if you don't do those things, you lose people. And so, one of the things the Board of Health did was, in 2020, in November, we went to them and said, look, we're seeing this continued delay. We are very concerned. We think we need to add two more positions. We were able to fill them, but I'll just tell you, it takes time unless you find someone who's already authorized in North Carolina. It takes a long period of time, six to eight months, I would say, to get someone fully authorized where they can issue a permit. And you can't compare someone who's newly authorized to someone who's been doing it for years and years. We thankfully have a very qualified person here, Joe Holder, who does the majority of the permits here in Allegheny County. The Board of Health also, last year, last fall, we mentioned to them that we were concerned about the competition. A lot of counties were raising up their salaries, having huge sign-on bonuses and trying to pull away from other counties. Rowan County, in fact, actually did a $25,000 sign-on bonus to get staff, and they did. They got authorized staff to come join them. I don't know how things look now, and whether they were able to retain them or not. But I guess, my theory about this is two things. I've seen this happen before. I wasn't the Health Director at the time, but I worked at the Health Department, and Andy worked in environmental health, leading environmental health when we had the last big building boom. And we have to staff like we're going to have a boom to some degree, not completely, but to some degree. We've got to make sure we do that, because if we don't, it's almost like it's too late once we realize it, because it takes so long to get someone trained. And that's where we are right now. So, I've done some data analysis. In addition to what you see here, you can see that, you know, if you look at those two years, we've increased 79%, you know, in our water protection application demand. That tells me we are going to need some more staff. Previously, when we added another position, we were able to hire a local Allegheny County person who was working at another health department, and we shamelessly stole him away, right? And we're glad that he's here. So, he's working part-time here in this county and part-time in Ash County. I think we're going to need to hire some additional positions. So, that's what our assessment data says, when we calculate how many site visits our staff are having to make, and how many permit applications we're getting. And remember, they're not just doing new things, but if someone has a failing system, if we have a complaint that my neighbor's property has sewage spilling over in Naman, all of those have to be done by our staff. So, I think that's impacting the number of people. And then, the other issue, I think, is, you know, what's happened, in my view, going back to the, I guess, the late 2000s, before everything busted, what we saw is people moving people around. So, you know, we've got to find a way to broaden the pool of applicants to be able to bring more people into the work. And I think that needs a very close attention to what qualifications are required, within reason. So, in the interim, you know, I guess the short-term answer is, we're not in a good place. You're right. We have concerns about it, too. And I think the short-term answer is, we've got a couple of ideas, and I'm going to ask Andy to share this with you, too. We have a grant that's also funded through the American Rescue Plan. We're doing this in partnership with our other counties in our region. And that is Forsyth, Davie, Davidson, Stokes, Surrey, Yadkin, Wilkes, and I think I got them all. They have joined with us as part of this grant. It's a CDC-funded grant, and it's looking at public health workforce. So, part of our effort in that was trying to look at, what does the whole region think that our biggest need is? And I'll tell you where we honed in on was environmental health workforce, because everybody is facing this challenge. And, sorry, Andy, I've got one more. This is the last one. Yeah, I think I might not have as many of those, so I can. There's a couple of things that we're proposing with this grant dollars. One is to fund environmental health technicians across our whole region. So, for us, that's three positions, one per county. And an environmental health technician can only do the things that North Carolina REHS Board says is okay to do, meaning they can't issue a permit, they can't be a final signer offer of a permit. But if I compare what we do in the clinic, you know, your doctor doesn't do all the steps in the process in your visit. They do the last step. You have a medical assistant, or a nurse, or other people who are part of that team. And so, what we're proposing to do is hire additional technicians who don't have the same educational requirements, but could have a reasonable salary with benefits and be able to work and take some of the load off of the permitting staff. Basically, it will require us to shift our workload around so that more of the paperwork, perhaps some of the site visits, to say, you said your site was ready for us to come out. I'm going to come and make sure that you're ready, because a lot of our visits are wasted trips. Andy can speak more about that. But they may come out and actually see that, nope, you don't have, you're not ready. So, this is our attempt to have a short-term, quick answer. And I have also asked the Director of Environmental Health, along with my other colleagues, we've sent him a letter today, asking that they revisit the list of approved duties for a technician to do. They have to do it under the direction of an authorized staff member. We certainly don't want people not qualified issuing permits, but we do want to try to maximize flexibility where we can, and that will require a state change. The other part that Andy shared with you is a pre-solicitation notice. This is because we have two regions of the state that were willing to take some of their ARPA funds and put it into this project to really take a deep dive at this whole workforce challenge that every county has continued to have over and over again. I think that, you know, what you'll see is that we have put out, basically saying that we're going to ask for bids, which will go out next week. We'll be having a formal solicitation process begin. And we are leading this project for these two regions. Our health district is. But you'll see, we go all the way down to Cumberland County is the other regional lead, and the other counties that are listed at the top. So, my point in saying all that is, this is not an Allegheny County issue. It's not an AP District issue. It's a state issue that needs to be addressed. There are private permitting options for people. I can tell you, just in our conversations with the private firms, that they are also, you know, experiencing some delays as well. The cost of using a private firm is greater by a considerable amount, but it is an option. If people are very interested in doing that, they certainly can have that option, and we support that. I guess I'll just say, you know, what I think is probably needed next is a stakeholder meeting of sorts, where we can pull together some folks to look at this issue a little bit more in detail. I also would welcome any of you who want to learn more about what an environmental health specialist does, to talk to us, because we're happy to have you come and do a field visit with Andy, or Joe, or some of our other staff. It's a lot more complex than I think a lot of folks understand. They have to do a lot of work to try to make sure that what we're putting in paper is actually going to hold, and that it's a credible permit. I think I've rambled enough, so I'm going to stop and see if you have questions. I guess in short, what I think is probably going to be needed is, we're going to need to add some positions, again. What, how we do that, and the way we do that, is going to be, I think, needs to be informed by both the Board of Health and our three commissioner boards, because, again, we're going to need to determine how we are going to fund those positions. Does that mean that we go out and the Board of Health funds it for a period of time, and then counties agree to pick up part of the cost, some of the cost, all of the cost? Does it mean that we project out how we're going to increase fees over time and pass that along to the consumers, so it's not shared by all taxpayers? It's going to be a decision that I think all of you need some, you need to have some input in, because we want to give good service, but we cannot do it if we don't have enough people to do it. And, you know, we've already added, and I can tell you, not just on the specialist side, but because of the volume in the last two years, we've added office staff across our three counties. We used to have a front office person who was shared with the clinic here in Allegheny, but we've made her full-time just environmental health, because there's that much need. I feel like maybe you might want to hear from Andy about his perspective, too, but, you know, that's the, that's the big takeaway, and we certainly don't want to be the reason people can't move forward with their projects. That's not at all where we want to be. But we're going to have to work together to try to figure out how we get to a better place, and then try to stay there. I think we're going to have to staff it like it matters down the road and figure out the best way to do that.
Questions?
Really, well, yeah, I do have one. You talked about the possibility of private contractors. Do you have a list of folks that are approved that could, that can do that? I mean, do y'all work with any in our district or your district currently?
We have a number of private consultants, both engineers and licensed soil scientists that do work in our district. We can, within the realm of not promoting one over the other, steer people towards those licensing boards where they can come into contact with these private companies.
Then, kind of a comment, conversation is, a lot of people, like you said, I mean, if you're not out there and get walking in those shoes, you don't really know exactly, the general public don't know exactly what's involved. I mean, doing a perk test, digging, having some holes out there to go out and then do some inspections in is one thing, but then, you know, then you're creating the permit, the paperwork, and then it's got to be, as it goes in, it's got to be inspected to make sure that it's, you know, it's being installed the way it was actually written up to do, and that's both on the septic and the well. So, I mean, there's a lot of time involved that's not just sitting there doing paperwork. So, just a...
I've got a list. I'll start with what Mark was asking about the private, the soil scientist. When I had Twin Oaks General Store, I had, I hired a soil scientist, and they were fairly, this has been 20 years ago, they were fairly fast then. But back then, it was almost, I thought it was $4,000, but I looked at some of my records, it was closer to $7,000, and had to have a backhoe come in and dig so many different sites for that soil scientist to go down into. And the Health Department provided me with the list, and at that time, it was three or four pages long. So, there is that private funding, but here in the last few weeks... But here in the last few weeks, I've, I've had quite a few people from, in the builders' industry, asking about these, about these tests. And one of them had $3,500 to do a house, but they were six weeks out. That's, you're roughly, I think, what, about anywhere from 10 to 12, or 10 to 14 weeks? Is that about your lead time right now?
Yes, sir, approximately.
So, you know, for what the soil scientist charges and what the Health Department charges, you know, that homeowner can make that decision themselves. But that option is available. The, about, how many permits in Al, I'm just talking Allegheny County, get done a day? Can, can they do one a day, or is it two or three a day? What's the number?
Well, the nature of our work, I mean, as I've spoken with this board before, is that it's not an assembly line. Every, any given morning, we don't know what's going to walk in the door. So, we may have set up an appointment two or three days prior with an applicant, with someone that's going to dig test holes for us, get our day mapped out, and then between 8:00 and 9:30, we might get requests for well grout inspections, wellhead inspections, septic finals. So, we typically try to get a couple of site evaluations scheduled during the day. If we can do more and work them in, that's great. If not, due to other responsibilities, then it's just very difficult to schedule when you can have anything come in at any given time that takes you away to try to get to it, such as an issue on a septic final, and installers in the middle of, of the install, they run into a problem. A spring has popped up, a rock, you know, as big as a truck is now in the middle of the drain field area, that you might not know about during the evaluation. And, and we have to address that with them as quickly as possible. So, it's, it's a, the scheduling is, is tough.
And weather has a lot to do with your scheduling.
Yes, sir. We lost just about, well, from the large storm on January 18th, the next four weeks, with, with anywhere from seven to 15 inches of snow across our district and continual sub-freezing temperatures. It impacts our ability to get to sites, especially if they're not on, on main roads, if you've got to get off in, into gravel roads and up on farm roads. And then the ability to work, when the ground's frozen, the installers and, and those that are digging the test holes can't access the sites to get us in there to, to do the evaluation. So, the, the weather does play a huge, when it rains for two or three days. That, then that puts the installers who are putting them in behind, in addition to the issues with supply chain with COVID, our, our suppliers of septic systems, we, we're on their radar. When you're going to get a big shipment, let us know. Because after that, that, that 18-wheeler hits your lot, every installer for eight counties is trying to buy product. And for the next four or five days, we know we're going to get a lot more installations, which means we're going to have less time for new evaluations. There's a lot of, a lot of components on, on a, on a good run, let alone with, with supply chain issues coming out of, out of winter into a, so far, kind of a wet spring. And, and not enough staff to handle the, there's nowhere near enough staff to handle our, our present demand from the well.
Do you have a priority list if, for example, there's been a system in the ground for years and it fails, but two people have applied for a well or a septic tank permit just to get the location laid out? Is there any type of priority list that, that you go by?
A failing septic system is considered an imminent health hazard. People can get sick directly, whether it's contamination of their water supply, or, or coming into contact with raw sewage on their property and getting sick. So, we try to get to repairs as quickly as we can. And we, and we do try to prioritize those because that is, that is, that is a direct threat to public health.
I got an email, I think, from Jen the other day about, y'all had a meeting with the Watauga Realtors Association. And they help, they help fund a portion of a GPS system.
Yeah, they gave us a, a check for, it was a little over $3,200 to help us.
A little closer, do you mind?
They gave us a check for about $3,200 to help purchase a GPS unit. And I'll let Andy talk a little bit more about that because I think it's going to be helpful. I don't think it's going to be a magic bullet, but I think it can be helpful in some situations.
Right. So, some in the private sector, and there are a few of the larger counties down east that, that are using GPS units that are tied into their cell phones to, to map out septic and well locations, plot, plot house sites, property lines, and then use that to generate site plans, which currently our staff are having to draw by hand. And that, that does take, take some time when you're generating a permit. So, we are, we are looking into the, you know, is this something that would help our staff increase their efficiency? There, there's good and bad with everything, but we want to look into it and get, and get, get a unit or two hands-on to see where it, where it could help us potentially speed up the site evaluation process to some degree, but mainly on getting permits. Because if we can lay out the system, designate well areas, house sites, and then let the computers talk and generate a, a very nice site plan, then, then that takes a lot out of ruler and pen.
You need to test that to see if it speeds up the process any.
Right. And there, there are a lot of different variables. And talking to some of the consultants in other counties, especially down east where it's flat and there's not as many trees, it's a little different getting a GPS signal in the mountains. And we have a consultant from Greensboro that comes up here and is like, "What cellphone service do you use? We're on AT&amp;T, and my GPS phone interface is, is not that good." So, you know, we, we need to, we need to really look at it, talk with other counties. We've been talking with some private firms to see what they use. Get a unit in hand and go out and see if investing in this technology will actually be efficient or, or not.
Notice in your request this year for the county, the, the end, the end, what we've been giving you is basically the same as it was last year. I think we've added to it every year for the last three or four years, a little over And we share that with Watauga and Ash County. Obviously, Watauga's a lot more, Ash is second, we're third because of the size. Talking about this GPS system, is there any, anything the county, our county commissioners can do to help you in any way purchase any type of material that would speed up some of these inspections?
I'll just say, I feel like the, possibly, but I think the biggest need we have are people. We submitted our budget request, I think in February was when you, you all wanted it. So, that does not include additional environmental health positions, you know, in addition to what we've already added. The technicians that we're going to hire, we're going to use grant money for that, which is good for the next year. So, I think the biggest place where we need your help is to figure out if we need to hire additional staff to make Allegheny environmental health more efficient, what's the best way to go about financing that? And I say that because I think there's a multitude of ways for us to look at it. It doesn't all have to be local dollars. It could be a combination of fees and local dollars, or could be, you know, perhaps the Board of Health wants to take action to, to front that the beginning of the year and carry it forward. I, I think it requires some more conversation, but we won't get better permit turnaround without enough staff, is the big takeaway, authorized staff. We hope that the technician will be a, a short-term, potentially a longer-term solution that will be financially, you know, sustainable. You know, those positions, they still cost, but they're at a lower salary than an environmental health specialist is. So, we're trying to come up with a way to help ourselves get out of this place, if that makes sense. But I don't think it's going to get dramatically better until we get more people in the job and we get them trained and authorized. And unfortunately, you know, we've, we've batted around a lot of different ideas. The Board of Health, as you know, Commissioner Irwin authorized the staff to work overtime hours. So, we're still doing that. We've, we've talked about, is there anybody else that we could contract with that might want to do some night and weekend work? Problem is, every other county is in this position, and so nobody wants to do the extra night and weekend work here because they're, they're probably having to do it at home. But that's the, I, I think the funding decision is really what's needed. And we didn't ask for that initially because that's what the board, you know, decided. And I, I didn't frankly ask for additional positions because we were still doing an assessment to try to determine what's needed. I think it's a little bit of, you know, we're trying to go out on a limb, which is what we did before. And we were able to pay for that because the volume of permits that we were able to process and the additional fees that we assessed in 2020 have helped us cover that cost more so. We're having to cover a lot of different costs in, in different areas. So, that's the biggest place you could help us.
The next question is, how many sites, there again, just Allegheny, fail the, fail for a septic tank?
I don't know the specific number. If a site is completely classified as unsuitable, but it's, I, I'm pretty confident it's pretty low. It's probably less than 5% and maybe one or two. There are a lot of options open to us when we permit. Now, some of them are more expensive than others. But the vast majority, when we do the site evaluation, have a, have a good outcome.
Now, what happens if you've approved a site and they go ahead and they build their septic tank, you know, by the permit and everything, and it fails? In the past, haven't we had some trouble with systems that were either old or not properly laid out or properly installed?
Well, septic systems, anything man-made will eventually wear out, break down. It, it can be for a multitude of factors. It could have been improperly designed, could have been an issue on the installation that was not noted. It could be due to changes in hydrology, meaning, you know, 10 years ago, this was a dry piece of property, and now we've got several springs that are, that are coming up in that area. They will fail, and, and then we try to come up with the best repair for them.
So, that doesn't happen very often, though, does it?
Well, systems are always failing. Be, you know, right now, we're seeing a lot of systems from, from the 90s on, on the board. So, a lot of, a lot of times, you know, you can get 20, 30 years out of a system, assuming all factors, you're taking care of it, you're pumping it regularly, you're careful what you put down in it, you don't have my teenage daughter trying to take a four-hour shower. You can really extend the life, but they eventually will fail.
And just two other final things. You said, and I know this, I think everybody knows, this is not an Allegheny problem. This happens all over the state that were short inspectors, people that can go out and do the actual legwork. And you mentioned the overtime. Do any of our employees take advantage of that overtime pay and work now that the times change, late at night, or Saturdays, or holidays?
We do. I think the guy standing next to me does a lot of it because he's here in Allegheny County and picks up a lot on the weekends. And I think, you know, what we've done is we've made it a option for employees, but we've not required it intentionally because we believe that if we add so much pressure to the current workforce, they can walk and go get a job anywhere else they want right now. So, it's a fine balance. We're trying to promote it, and I think we're going to see more people do it with the weather, you know, turning around.
Notice in your position vacancy that, that you do have a footnote that there could be evening and weekend work required.
Yeah.
I, I go back to this, the salary range and what you've been through with the requirements of two years of college, the, you know, 30 hours of the science degrees, and then the internship-type thing. $26,000 to start out is not a great, great number, I don't think, right now.
Well, no, it isn't. But remember, that is the technician position that we just posted.
Just for the technician?
Right. So, I think what we have to decide is how many more authorized staff that can issue a permit, the specialist level? And the starting pay for that is, I think, around $55,000 a year. So, it's, it's competitive, and I think for our benefits that we offer through the Health Department, I think we're, we're a pretty competitive place to be. I will say, a couple of applicants that Andy has shared with me that we've talked to in the last year that have already had authorization, the challenge in bringing them up here was the cost of housing. They weren't able to, even with our higher pay, pay for, you know, buy a house up here. So, that's one of the things, unfortunately, that has kept some away. Because we've wanted to shamelessly steal anybody who's willing to come that we feel like is, could do the job.
Well, I just want to finish by saying, I appreciate everything you do, but we've got to solve this problem somehow. It's an economic development roadblock for this county and for all the counties, that people, you know, can't get their septic tank system laid out, so they can't buy the material they need. We can't get the sales tax dollars, which we turn around and give part of that to the Health Department to keep everybody going. And, and I know you two realize that, the whole board realizes that. But we've got to have a solution, and just good luck trying to find it. I'm finished.
Any other questions?
I've got a general question. I get this question a whole lot. People don't know what a septic tanks are. Do you all have that GIS on record?
Well, so, if we have a permit on record, and, and I will, I'm just going to say, if it's from the mid-'90s forward, the site plan detail is, is pretty good. Since about 2000, 2005, the site detail has gotten a lot better. So, if we have that on record, we should be able to tie down the tank and drain lines pretty easily. Some of the older permits, the, the detail's not there. Depending on what the applicant applies for, if, if our staff are out, we can try to probe and look for that. And we're successful a, a, a large amount of the time. But there are private inspectors that, that they can hire to come out that have a lot more tools, such as transmitters, they can flush down the toilet, cameras that have video snakes on them with transmitters. But search engine, we are always making sure what we put in it is, is as good a quality. And, and that goes back to making sure they're in the office or doing good work on the permits and the final as-built so that future owners of the property won't have some of the issues you might find if you bought a house that was built in '70, '80, early '90s.
Good information. That's from a mid-'90s forward, you, pretty much.
Then you see a real, well, yeah, because you, you start to see a lot, a progression of the permit site plans getting more and more detailed.
See, see why y'all so busy? We've had a 79% increase since 2019 to 2020. We've had a 79% increase since 2019 to 21, so that tells you there's a whole lot going on.
In bad weather?
In bad weather, that's right. Anybody got anything else?
Just, so, so kind of really what you're saying is, I mean, you, staff is.
We need staff.
Where you've got to have help.
We need enough people that are authorized, trained, that we can retain for more than a couple of years. And if, if the economy turns down like it did in '08, we, we need to keep them. We have other areas that we can get them authorized in, if that's the case, but without enough specialists that are authorized in, in water protection and, and the food side, we can't get the inspections done. We can't issue septic permits on a, on a timely manner. And that's just, that's just, that's the bottom line.
So, and you, if I understood you correctly, you didn't actually request any in the budget that's currently been submitted to us?
We have not, we have not included that, no. But I.
I mean, I would certainly, I'm, I'm not speaking for the board, but I would certainly love to, you know, as you said, maybe we could, you know, some of that data and figure out how, what we could do and maybe even have some of it as a budget. Not saying we, I don't know where the budget looks like, no, but I mean, I'd certainly be willing to try to, you know, if we knew, if we had the data, we could, you know, host a number of positions and we could, we, could we fund a position and have it dedicated to, to the county or something? I don't, you know, I know that's a conversation because you're a, you're a district, but still, I'd be willing to certainly hear and what can we do, you know? In other words, this didn't fix anything, but it did enlighten hopefully a lot and maybe, you know, we can go forward with, with a, some kind of working relationship to help you in some positions or in some money, some money that's applicable or we could use it or whatnot. But, I mean, right now, all options are on the table, but for me, and I think for all of us, but, you know, not without limits, but we certainly look forward to hearing how we can help, what kind of positions you need. And I know even if we, if we, if you said, here's what it's going to take, here's the positions we need, it's not an overnight fix. It's kind of a long-term plan that we're going to have to work together, but at least, you know, there's some light at the end of the tunnel if we can figure out some kind of a plan and work together. And I do thank you both and I'll love you.
It is. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate the job, y'all do.
Thank you.
Like anything else, that concludes.
That's my question to the chairman.
Host and secretary.
Thank you.
20 minutes, we start again.